Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We want to welcome you to this special call meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, and we will officially call this meeting to order at this time. We welcome each one of you who are here tonight relative to this special meeting and a rezoning appeal. For those of you that are watching from home, Facebook, or whatever, we thank you for participating, as always, in our county commissioners' meeting. And at least glad we have this method to, I guess, the IT department to zoom these meetings out to those folks at home who can't come and attend in person. But we welcome you and thank you for your patience as we go through this time. This is a special call meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners to hear an appeal of a zoning board decision to rezone a piece of property on Jordan Valley Road for Tessa Downs subdivision, and that was unanimously passed by the planning board, and the citizens have filed a notice of appeal of that decision, and that is the lone agenda item that we have to hear tonight. So we will hear a presentation of the property, the project, by Jay Dale, and then the developer will speak. And then those of you that are here tonight in opposition or have questions about the development, you will have an opportunity to be heard at that time. So again, we welcome you. I will remind all the commissioners that when you speak or ask questions, please directly into the mic if you want to pull that a little closer to you, but we are recording this meeting, so it is necessary that we do speak directly into our microphones. So again, thank you all of you for being here tonight, and I will recognize Jay Dale to present the issue.
Chairman Frye, members of the board, good evening. We are here this evening to hear an appeal of the request of Bobby Earnhardt. He was asking that 87.48 acres located on Jordan Valley Road be rezoned to CVOE/CD, which the board is aware is conventional lot overlay exclusive conditional district. It would be for a 48-lot site-built subdivision with a minimum house size of 1,500 square feet. I'd like to point out to the board that there is Davidson Water available, so there would not be an issue with wells. Here we have a picture of the site. The development will take place on the west side of the creek. The little panhandle part over there is not part of the request and actually lies in totality in a rural growth area, so it would be three-acre lots if it were to be divided up and look a little different than what we're looking at tonight. Here's a part of the site plan where you can see the 10 lots that'll be fronting on Jordan Valley Road. One of those is already existing. You can probably see the existing house on the site plan. Here's the remainder of it. I would like the board to take note of, you'll see sort of a creek line along the far eastern side of the property. That also contains some flood zone there, but the majority of the property is well out of that, so you would be able to site a house outside of that.
Jay, this is not presented in that way. That's not in phases. That's still just a single project.
Yes, sir. It's just a big map, and we had to sort of spread it out to get everything. Once again, we have an aerial photograph of the site, and here's some photographs of the request location as well as the surrounding area. The technical review committee voted unanimously to approve it. We believed it was within keeping of the development within the area. You see a little bit of everything. It backs up to a very large mobile home park. There's a lot of different house sizes up and down the road. 1,500 didn't really seem to be anything that was not within keeping with that, and the planning board also voted unanimously to approve the request. And Mr. Chairman, that is an overview of the request.
Wait, Jay, can you go back to the colored picture?
Is that what you're looking at, ma'am?
Yes. May I ask a question? Okay. On the bottom of page 42, it says that Earnhardt has written agreement to purchase the adjacent parcel so that his remaining acreage won't be landlocked. Where's the adjacent parcel?
Not real sure off the top of my head. I'd have to defer to Mr. Earnhardt on that as to what he was speaking to.
Okay, then they can answer that later.
Yes, ma'am.
Jay, I have a question about this list. This site is in Tabernacle Township.
Yes, sir.
You list all the schools in the Trinity. They can't, because of the supplemental school tax, they can't attend those Trinity schools from another. I think this is actually in Trinity Township.
Okay. I'm looking at the development impact analysis. We have them at Hopewell Elementary, Braxton Craven Middle, and Wheatmore High.
Wheatmore High.
Yes, sir.
And that's all in Trinity Township?
Yes, sir.
And you can't, you have to pay the tax if you come from outside.
Okay.
And my daughter lived on Slick Rock Mountain Road. My granddaughter lived, my daughter lived on the south side, and she went to Southwest, and the kids across the street from her went to Trinity. So, and that's about a mile further down.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I didn't have anything to do, I just wanted to make that clarification.
That's interesting.
Mr. Chairman, you just say that is in Trinity Township?
Yes.
I want to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you're saying that those schools listed are the correct schools?
Yes, they are. Yes. Any other questions, Jay?
Anyway?
Well, let me, oh, go ahead. While we're on the school thing, I just wanted to clear, I think I've asked one of you. Just kind of looking at those school numbers, trying to speak into the microphone. I guess the middle school's the one, but I guess our completion of the new middle school will help alleviate some of that, those numbers being upside down?
Yes, yes. Some of those will go to the Trenton, the new middle school. The current Archdale Trinity Middle School will be supplying Wheatmore.
All right.
And the new middle school will supply Trinity High School.
Okay. I'm glad you clarified that.
So these kids would go to the Archdale Trinity, middle, current middle school's been there, and they'd go to Wheatmore High School.
The one thing I noticed on this one map that has the, has the portform on it and everything, I noticed a lot of the red dots, which are, of course, permanent structures in that area, which would pretty much mean that it's all compatible with that particular area.
Yes. Other questions? All right. We will hear from the developer, or at this time, if you wish to speak.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, or good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Taylor Callicut from Ivy and Eggleston. Our office is representing Mr. Earnhardt with respect to his rezoning application for this development. My purpose of being here is mainly just to state that Mr. Earnhardt is here. He's going to be able to answer a lot of these questions better than I, as far as specific to the site, as far as his developmental plans, timeline, and an outline for what that's going to look like. Also, H.R. Gallimore's here from Remax. He's the realtor that's involved in that. He may be able to answer some questions for you as well. I'm certainly happy to answer any to the best of my ability, should the board have them for me, but my main purpose is just to introduce them and to present myself for questions, should there be any.
I'll ask you, it may be a question for one of the other gentlemen, but one of the issues that was raised at the planning board was there were no deed restrictions available. I talked to Jay later, I think there was, somebody was sick, they just didn't get there in time, but have the deed restrictions now been filed? Are they in place?
They have not been recorded yet. They've been provided to planning and zoning, and it's my understanding they are in receipt of those restrictions at this time. We are planning to put them on record, assuming that the board has no further recommendations or requirements. They would be placed on record at the time the final plat was approved and recorded.
And will the developer sell lots and develop lots, or?
That's my understanding, but he can speak to that, I think, better than I, as far as what the makeup may look like for him.
I guess the deed restrictions, or that's, is that what's been provided in our packet?
I think there has been a copy, yes.
Who enforces deed restrictions?
Generally, it is a requirement of folks in the subdivision itself. I don't think the county's general position is to enforce those. More or less deed restrictions, as the board is aware, is generally they are in place to protect other residents in the same development. I think the county's position, and I'll defer to Mr. Dale, should I be speaking incorrectly, but I think the county's position is so long as it meets the zoning requirements, code requirements, building code requirements, then the restrictive covenants are icing on the cake in order to protect the continuity of the neighborhood and to protect property values of other folks who live in that development.
Yep. One of the things I've always been told and gone by in these situations, adjoining property owners have more enforcement authority in deed restrictions than we do. We have the conditions for rezoning, which they have to meet, and they have to agree to that, and they have, but deed restrictions are for the protection of the property owners and their rights under that, under those restrictions.
That is correct. It's mainly a question, I think, of standing, as far as who has standing to initiate an action to enforce or for breach.
We really don't have standing to enforce those.
Any further questions for me? If not, I'll be glad to turn it over to Mr. Gallimore and Mr. Earnhardt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and unlike Taylor, I know it's not morning. Nice to see you guys tonight. Appreciate your time. We first, we last met on October 6th, and we had a positive response from the technical review committee and from zoning staff, and we were fortunate enough to receive unanimous approval from the planning board. There were a few questions at that time, and one, Commissioner Frye, you just mentioned, we had sent the restrictions in, but Mr. Magnum had had some serious surgery. He was not here, and we forwarded those over the next day, as a matter of fact, I think, if that's right, Jay, we got them to you, got them to you expeditiously, and so I apologize for that error, but it was just one of those situations of a health concern on that end. What we have done diligently here, what Mr. Earnhardt has done, is to make sure that we meet all the technical requirements necessary for the ordinance and wanted to be totally in compliance with the growth management plan. We feel we have done that. I refer you to policy 6.5 in the code, and it says to ensure, in this particular property, it says to ensure the continued existence as a major housing source. One point I made in the last meeting, Davidson Water's a pretty smart bunch of folks. They ran water this way a long time ago, expecting to see growth in this area. They don't typically send water if they don't think there's going to be growth and need for that water, so we're happy to have that. That would answer any questions anyone would have about wells and so forth. One of the other questions that came up was about water runoff. I mean, you know, you have natural runoff anyway. This is an agricultural, as it stands, this is an agricultural piece of property, and I would say that plowed fields and pastures and barns and chicken houses and all those things don't present that different of an impervious scenario. Development is development, whether it's agriculture or whether it's residential. One other thing I'd like to correct, two things. One, this is actually, and it's a small note, but it is a note, this is 48, this says 48, it's 45 lots. Mr. Earnhardt had three lots approved out on the street. That's not in the request. They've already been done. So it's a 45-lot maximum request, and the reason we say maximum, the developer doesn't go to the expense of doing all the soil analysis with a soil scientist and so forth until you know you have approval, and it's, more times than not, you're going to lose a few lots, just because of the perkability, which means they may have to tweak this a little bit in order to satisfy that. And then the last question, and Ms. Heywood, you mentioned this, there is another piece of property, and it comes last time, that sits at the rear, at the very end of the cul-de-sac at this property, and it was not a publicly known thing at the time, but Mr. Earnhardt felt compelled to go ahead and mention it. He has a bulletproof contract to purchase the other existing property. I think it's timed versus someone's demise. I'm not sure, but he's got a contract. But if he, if he reserves a couple of lots here at his discretion, which he certainly would do, that will eliminate any possibility of any landlocked land that sits in the vicinity.
Mr. Gallimore, is, how does he, is there a wetlands issue with the creek or crossing that to get to the back portion?
Not to my knowledge. I think most of that was covered with the technical review committee. I think there's some watershed, and, you know, there's always a possibility, some wetlands, and everyone's pretty conscious of that.
But that's the developer's risk.
That's the developer's risk, that's correct.
On those three lots that are being developed, I saw there were houses already going up on those three lots, lots one through three. What's the width of the, I'm trying to find on the map the width of the lot at the road frontage. I don't see that listed.
Well, since I wasn't representing that, it was not part of the request or the action tonight. Bobby, do you know the width of the lots?
The reason I'm asking, I'm trying to get a, kind of a feel for the width of the lots.
Okay. Jay, do you have a?
Just kind of a reference.
I understand. The three that he's already had planted. That's not in the request here tonight.
I mean, it looks like it's between a 75 and 100 feet, but it's hard to tell.
Did you hear Jay's response? Typically, they're 100.
They'd have to have 100.
Yeah, that's a requirement. They have to be 100. I guess it could be a little more, it's not going to be any less than that per lot. That's to meet the code, right? That's to meet the code.
And it's going to be along the Jordan Valley Road.
Jordan Valley Road, just three that he's done already. And last time, there seemed to be some misunderstanding that that was part of the request. It is not part of the request.
I understand that. I just saw those houses, and they're, pretty much those lots are similar to what the other lots in the request are.
That's right. And if you notice in the restrictions, it's 1,500 square feet, and I can tell you guys, at 1,500 square feet with today's cost of construction, you're looking at $200,000 houses. You're not looking at $150,000 houses. It's just the math won't work.
Right.
So they'll be nice homes. They would have to be.
Just to clarify, you're talking about a 1,500-square-foot house, not something even more?
It could be 15 or greater. Now, someone else to build a bigger home.
Yeah.
And David, Mr. Allen, you mentioned earlier, is he going to build these or sell the lots? It has been his, I can't speak for Mr. Earnhardt on this, it's been his normal business operation that he builds his own homes. Not to say he wouldn't sell someone a lot if they wanted to buy it and do that, but they would have to meet the restrictions.
Right.
That's not his intent, though.
Other questions?
We're available if you need us again. I would like to reserve the right to answer any questions that might come up throughout the meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in support or informative for the request? All right. Hearing none, we will ask for those who wish to speak in opposition or with your questions about the development. And just please, for our records, will you state your name and address, and then when you leave, as Mr. Gallimore's doing, if you would write your name on our register over here.
My name is Claus Anderson. My wife, Diane, and I live at the end of Jordan Valley Road. Wish I could have my presentation up there, but I guess that's not going to work. At the planning and zoning meeting, our neighbor spoke to the condition of our road, the amount of traffic from the two trailer courts, and the increased flooding after rain events. We're also emotionally pleased to keep our neighborhood more rural in nature, as opposed to the higher-density community housing. It seemed to us the comments about the increased tax base and proposed subdivision complied with the determination of consistency in finding of reasonableness and public interest carried more weight than the neighbors living on Jordan Valley Road. We contend there was misinformation presented to the planning board, leading to their determination, and the public interest was not appropriately considered. At that October 6th meeting, and I'm not sure how you folks have this, the exhibits, okay? Getting ahead of myself here. Hang on just a second. At that meeting, on exhibit one, there was an excerpt from the motion based on the determination of consistency in findings of reasonableness and public interest. That document was not made available to those at the present, at the hearing, at the meeting. That document is actually done, I think, by your office, right, Jay?
Yeah, but determination of reasonableness is done after the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Are you speaking to the, from the review committee, the neighborhood review process?
The planning board, yes.
Oh, at the planning board?
At the planning board. And it's in there, Mr. Cable made the motion, and based on so on and so forth, that the, that that request was approved. Excerpt from the, from the motion, "The request is also consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan and submission of the restricted covenants, as mentioned, to meet our specifications." The development impact analysis, which is that document, that impact analysis provided the public list 48 lots. That's on exhibit two. List 48 lots, and as Mr. Gallimore mentioned, that wasn't quite correct because there was 45 lots. There's three lots that were already subdivided from this parcel, and I guess that was all And then exhibit three, 45 lots were used to generate the additional 270 vehicle trips per day on Jordan Valley Road. Somehow, we've got the other three lots. Does that make this information right, that vehicle trips? I don't know. Further, the development impact analysis lists the minimum housing size as 1,500 square feet. It's on that statement. Upon receipt of the covenants, the minimum house size is listed as 1,000 square feet. That's your exhibit four. We contend these differences would affect the numbers listed on the development impact analysis and perhaps change the determination and consistency in findings of reasonableness and public interest. At the meeting, testimony by a realtor on behalf of the developer cited the request met the requirements of Randolph County Unified Development Ordinance and policy 6.5 in the Growth Management Plan. See exhibit six. And 6.5, "The protection of viable rural neighborhoods should be encouraged by compatible residential development to ensure the continued existence as a major housing source and as a reflection of the long-term quality of life in Randolph County." And a major housing source, but one thing that's not mentioned anywhere here is that within a half a mile is the Haley Gold Mine subdivision, which was 400 and some acres, but we'll move on. We contend that all the policies listed in the Growth Management Plan should be considered. In other words, 6.5 is important, but there's a whole bunch more. Exhibit seven, this is out of your Randolph County Growth Management Policy Guidelines. Policy 1.3, "The benefits of an economic development should be balanced against the possible detrimental effects such development may have on the quality of life enjoyed by area residents." 65 neighbors signed a petition against the subdivision for Tessa Downs. That's pretty much everybody up and down Jordan Valley Road. That petition was given to the planning board, and I believe you have a copy of it. We go to policy 6.1. "A public facilities impact analysis should be required of all applicants proposing major subdivision development. The analysis should include a basic review of the expected impact Randolph County and the local community as it relates to public infrastructure, environment, and community 6.12, "Factors should be considered in major subdivision approval in primary and secondary," which this is. "Growth areas should include suitability of soils, access to major thoroughfares, the potential availability of public services and facilities, and neighborhood compatibility." Then we get a whole slew of them. Environmental quality, 7.5 through 7.9. "Site plan should be provided that design built upon areas to specifically minimize stormwater runoff, impact to streams and other receiving waters. Stormwater impact should be minimized by designing the new development in a manner that minimizes concentrated stormwater flow through maximizing the length of stormwater sheet flow through vegetated buffer areas. County planning and development decisions should be interconnected to ensure that concentrated development is located in upland areas and to the maximum extent possibly away from surface waters and drainage ways. Stormwater runoff should be designed in a manner that will be transported from the development by vegetated conveyances to the maximum extent possible. The county should work with local governments having jurisdictions and watersheds to develop cooperation and coordination in all matters relative to watershed stormwater management If we get to exhibit 12, which is basically the one part of the subdivision request. If you notice, there's a little yellow line going through there. That's the 100-year floodplain. And to the east of that is that piece of land that the developer has the option to buy. 13 is a picture from the Randolph County GIS showing the proposed subdivision, and I've arbitrarily drawn a black line there to show about where that subdivision ends. And please note, there's a mobile home court. And it dawned on me, a 14-by-70 mobile home is a little over 900 square feet, and the covenants on this parcel say that the minimum house size is 1,000 square feet. The, this shows the relationship of the subdivision to the watershed. "The development will change the amount of pervious and impervious," and I wrote lands there, but I was corrected by someone with more experience and knowledge than me. It's surfaces. It's going to change the surfaces that flow into the floodplain. Exhibit 14 shows the relationship of the proposed subdivision to Earnhardt Road. Now, if you look at that subdivision and go down the page, you'll see Earnhardt Road. Kenneth and Tammy Wilson live at the intersection of Jordan Valley and Earnhardt Road. Steve and Karen Lane live just north of them, the adjacent property. So exhibits 15, 16, and 17, and I apologize, I took these pictures and didn't realize I had them skewed. I had them skewed. Fifteen shows, it's down in the bottom, we called it, at Steve and Karen's place, what it looks like after a major rain event and what it looks like when it's not raining. And the same, the other two pictures show their pasture field. Exhibits 18 and 19 were taken from the intersection of Jordan Valley and Earnhardt Road. And on 18, you're looking up the creek, so to speak, and at Kenneth's place, and the bottom part shows what it was like at that last rain event. 19 shows what Jordan Valley, or, excuse me, Earnhardt Road looked like with that. The water is actually going across the road. Further referring to the Growth Management Plan, historical growth, that's the historical background. "This Growth Management Plan is designed to recognize that sustainable economic growth, environmental protection, and rural quality of life can be pursued together as mutually supporting growth management and public policy goals. One does not necessarily exclude the other." And on 21, again out of your Growth Management Plan, "Individual rezoning decisions are dependent upon the scale of proposed development as it relates to the specific site and location. Sustainable rural economic growth, environmental protection, and rural quality of life shall be pursued together as mutually supporting growth management goals. With appropriate site conditions, one goal does not necessarily exclude the other." And then on 22, the summary of the growth plans. Exhibit 22, "Incompatible development can disrupt established residential patterns." "In closing, we ask that the rezoning and subdivision requests for Tessa Down be denied in favor of the subdivision with larger lots and fewer homes." And I will field any questions you may have.
This might be something we can cancel out, but I know you mentioned in the deed restrictions there were a thousand square foot homes, and then in the applications fifteen-hundred square feet. I guess that may be for you Jay, on what's, what's the, what's the minimum size?
It's fifteen-hundred square feet. The initial ones we got were a thousand square feet. I called Mr. Gallimore and said, did you notice as a...
Testing. The initial set of restrictions we got did say a thousand square feet. And after I saw that it was a thousand, I spoke to Mr. Gallimore, and he said it's a typo. He fixed it, it was fifteen-hundred square feet. So the ones that we have and that you should have in your packet say fifteen-hundred square feet.
Mine says a thousand.
Does it? Would you like to see the current one?
I was saying it had been changed, but I had a question for our attorney. If I'm reading this, our request was, which is right, is the fifty, in the fifteen-hundred a conditional use, a condition of the rezoning?
Yes, I mean, you're kind of...
What you're kind of asking is what I think Commissioner Haywood was asking earlier. It's like, who enforces deed restrictions? Is that, you know, that is a condition, that is, obviously, we don't go out generally and stop, halt construction, but that is a condition for a building permit. We look at those when they come in, the planning department. I think they look at those when they issue the permit.
We look at them, but according to the Institute of Government, if a man looks at me and says, "I want my permit," I can meet your standards, then I have to issue it.
Right, yeah. But I mean, but it's, it is, it is a part of the application that's before you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
That kind of plays to what the neighborhood is thinking. There's a... What was proposed and what was presented to us seems to change. Now, Teresa Andrews will, may want to come up and speak to the pervious and impervious surfaces. Trust me, in my experience, we've had to deal with pervious and impervious surfaces.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes ma'am.
Where, how far away is the, is your development, that you're developing? Do I have this right?
No, I'm not developing anything, ma'am.
Okay.
If I, if you're asking about the Haley Gold Mine, I think it's about a quarter of a mile as the crow flies on Jordan Valley Road and, what is it, Archdale Road that goes up over the mountain?
Now, where do you work?
Pardon me?
Where do you work?
Where do I work? I work for Ace of Concrete Construction.
Okay, but you don't have anything to do with this, with this development that they, that Ace is doing? There was a request for thirty-six acres on Racine Road to be rezoned for development.
Yes, that's a different, that's a totally different subdivision.
And that, but you, but you don't have anything to do with that?
I did, yes. I represented Ace of Real Property in that.
Okay.
And that was approved by the board, the planning board. There was only one person that showed up. He wasn't in opposition, he actually wanted to buy some land, and so on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sir, can you please sign the comment sheet?
Sorry, thank you.
Who wishes to speak next? Anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue tonight?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Teresa Andrews, and my address is 1772 Mountain Meadow Drive. You'll have to forgive me, I'm not a good public speaker, but bear with me.
You can go right ahead.
Okay. So, you know, I'm here to talk because I don't feel that the development plan as proposed is in the best interest of the community. I know Klaus covered a lot of stuff, which was excellent. I'm not going to specifically just talk about stormwater and flooding, just in general, and some of this you may already know, but I'll cover it anyway. So, basically, stormwater essentially is rainwater that falls, hits ground, and then runs off. As you have increased built-upon area, which is increased impervious area, the water does not get absorbed, and it runs off. In that runoff, there's many different things, especially when you think about a residential development, specifically, you know, we're talking bacteria from pet waste and various things like that, nutrients from fertilizers that you use on your lawn, as well as like heavy metals and oils from the car, cars and things, and driving on the road. And then you also have just regular sediment, which is also a pollutant, that obviously does a lot of harm to our creeks. So that's kind of one aspect of stormwater that's obviously extremely important. But in addition to that, we have kind of what Klaus touched on, and I know at the last meeting, a couple of the property owners touched on, which is the flooding in the area. And obviously, with that increased runoff, you have downstream flooding. You also have issues with stream bank erosion, as you have flashier flows coming off of the site, essentially. So, and I think this is maybe included in the packet from the planning board in the minutes, but a colleague of mine ran a hydrograph report, which is something that you do in AutoCAD. It's done for designing stormwater control measures, which are required, I think even some places in Randolph County, but in a lot of municipalities to help both attenuate the flow and treat for the pollutants. So those devices kind of often capture both things. So they treat the pollution, and they help slow the flow coming off of the site from the increase in built-upon area. So, from the hydrograph, if we look, and basically, just as a background, the hydrograph is a modeling system that you use in a computer. You enter the information about the property, and then you basically run different models based on various scenarios and different storm sizes. So, the one that I want to focus on is the one-year twenty-four-hour event, which is like a minimum storm size that is used to determine pre- and post-development runoff from a site. So if we look at the peak outflow for the pre-development, it's roughly six-point-five cubic feet per second. Now, if the development goes through as planned, it would be approximately twenty-eight-point-six cubic feet per second coming off of the site, just based on the change in impervious surface from the proposed development, with a little over an acre per house. I think it's one-point-two acres, I believe, roughly. So that, that's an increase of obviously twenty-two cubic feet per second, and that's for the small storm size that's generally required. Now, other communities, depending on where you're located at, sometimes require detention of the ten-year event, which is obviously a much larger event, and that information is also in there, but just focusing on the one-year tonight. So that's kind of a brief summary of that. You know, requiring stormwater control measures for a site, or even just detention, not treatment, would, would improve the conditions downstream significantly. I know, you know, you all have seen pictures of the downstream properties. The property that I'm on, my neighbor, it's actually my husband's uncle's property. It does flood as well, it's one of the downstream properties. And so, requiring some type of detention or reducing the number of houses that, that could be put in this area, I think would be a more favorable condition for the rezoning. So I would recommend you all consider that. If you have any questions, hopefully I can answer them.
All right. Anybody have a question, comment? Good job.
Are you saying that the forty-five homes would create a problem with impervious surfaces and additional water runoff? That would be detrimental to the stream?
Yes, so in, I mean, any increase in impervious surface, specifically what we ran it for was, was the lots that were proposed. So yes, that would be the additional forty-five, and that changed from the existing conditions, which did not include the, what is it, three other houses that were added, so the forty-eight. The existing conditions are roughly six-point-five cubic feet per second coming off the site. So that would increase twenty-two cubic feet per second. So that's, we're not talking volume, we're talking flow rate. So it's the cubic feet per second coming off of the site. So it would definitely have an impact on downstream property owners as well as the road. I know I have to go over those culverts all the time, and it has been flooded out, I mean, I know at least once or twice in the past couple of years. So that's definitely concerning to me as a person who's got to get out. But, but yes, essentially, it, it would increase the stormwater coming off of the site, which is concerning. So a stormwater device such as a pond can be designed to detain a certain amount of water, and that would obviously be up to y'all's discretion. I know the one-year twenty-four-hour event is, is one that's typically used as a lower requirement, but I know that that would help for those smaller events, which can obviously help in stream bank erosion and things like that. Yeah. Does that answer your question? Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Just, just a comment. It's interesting, I'm glad you kind of explained the, I took some geology, but not hydrology, so I was trying to figure out what these, this meant. But it's interesting, and I don't know if it, with the one-year runoff, it's four times, four-point-four times post-development. But in the ten-year, it's only one-point-six-nine, and then in the hundred-year, it's only one-point-three-nine. I don't know intuitively, I know it's based on runoff, but I wouldn't have thought it would have been, the smaller the event, the more severe the runoff.
This is a good question. So at a certain point, and this is dealt with a lot of times when you're designing stormwater control measures, you can only design so much, right? And when you get those giant events, they're so big that adding a little bit more doesn't make as big of an impact, I guess, this may be a good way to explain it. So if you were to require an SCM for the site, you know, it would help with those smaller events, but you can't engineer for everything. So you can't, I mean, you could build a device that would take care of the five-hundred-year event, but it would have to be huge.
It just overwhelms.
Yeah.
Volume, size.
Right, right. And I would also like to say, I know that earlier it was mentioned about crossing the creek and how I guess that would be on the property and on everything. I don't know about jurisdictional federally mapped wetlands down there, but I know obviously there is floodplain down there, and often, when you have floodplain, you have wetlands, generally speaking. It's pretty common, so I just thought I'd speak to that. And I know also, just in case it comes up, in the planning board meeting, after I gave a little spiel, it came up about erosion control measures and how that was related to what I was talking about, and I just want to clarify, just in case that gets brought up again. Erosion control devices are used, what, during construction? And y'all may already know this, but they're used during construction, they don't stay there after everything is built out and considered stabilized by the inspector. So those devices will get installed, you know, I'm sure per the erosion control plan, whatever is planned. However, they do get removed. So they, they are designed to capture the, the sediment leaving the site, and you know, obviously the water along with it, and try to filter that out. However, they do get removed, so just, they're not permanent structures. So I felt like that was important, because there is a lot of confusion between erosion control devices and permanent stormwater control measures, so. Okay.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
You did good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? All right.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Rutledge, and thank you for taking the time to come out and hear our concerns for our community this evening. Klaus and Teresa, I'm sure have provided a wealth of information in regard to our concerns of the hugely negative impact of this proposed subdivision on our community as well as the environment. We, as a neighborhood, feel that we voiced our concerns in regard to safety in our community, the wear and tear on our roads, the greatly increased noise and pollution that will be affecting our, our area. And we just have a huge concern for this development. We understand with progress comes growth and change, but we're just trying to, as neighbors, meet some type of compromise that will be pleasing to both parties. Fifty, nearly fifty homes, I know the proposed site says forty-five to forty-eight homes, that's quite a lot of residences to be built in a very small area. And if you look at some of the maps that you saw, the little red dots were of the structures and residences that were there. And if you look at that in comparison to the proposed subdivision, that's going to be quite a greater number of residences that, that are proposed to be built in this site. And so we just have a great concern about the negative impact, not only on our environment, but as well as the community, for this, this number of residences to be built in our area. I appreciate you listening to this, we are really concerned about this, and I'm glad that we've had the opportunity to come out and voice our concerns in regard to this. I just hope that some, somehow, that we can find a compromise that will be pleasing to both parties, that we can maybe meet in the middle and, and remain friends and, and good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the, to the request? Okay, hearing none. Anyone?
Anyone?
Thanks for giving me just another moment of your time. One thing I failed to mention earlier, the process of disrupting this much property falls under the auspices of Department of Water Quality, which you guys are known as DNR. So there are a number of considerations that Mr. Earnhardt has to follow, rules and regulations. Secondly, from a standpoint of development, you don't go in and take the whole acre and clear it. You save trees, you save buffers, you use the amount of the lot that's necessary in order to provide the structure with keeping of natural, some of the natural things that are there. Unlike agriculture, which Department of Water Quality has no jurisdiction over, thought I would just mention that to you guys, this is on residential agriculture, so one of the options would be agriculture. I would pose to you that some agricultural efforts here could be far worse than this with some management control. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, HR.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Gallimore?
For me?
Yeah. Just, just as an opinion, generally you look at these, excuse me, generally you look at these, these subdivisions that are made up, in this case, you're asking for forty-five lots. As an opinion, and that's all I'm asking for, would you sell forty-five lots and have forty-five homes there? Would you expect that to be the case?
We just did a subdivision on Otis Road that you guys were nice enough to, to approve. We sold a hundred percent of those lots that were for sale. One thing that's happening, and I think it speaks well for Randolph County, some of the neighboring counties are not as good a place to live. We've got an unbelievable amount of Guilford County, Forsyth County brokers, even Mecklenburg showing properties in our area. Earnings low, very low, and building costs are soared, as you guys know. So this gives us an opportunity to bring some folks into our community that I think will serve us well over time, and I know that's what we're all about, is having a prosperous community.
Helps provide a workforce, too.
Which never is a negative, is it?
Well, I guess one question is the, there was a comment made that some of the lots may be unusable because of the ability to perk, that kind of thing. You may lose some lots.
Be likely.
I guess if you lose those lots, then you, that lot particularly, you wouldn't redraw the...
Now typically, you do a little redraw, you make, make a couple of the adjoining lots a little bigger, to give a little land mass, you're not just going to leave it out there, but I would say, and remember, we spoke about probably a couple at the cul-de-sac that the developer may leave open because he has some residual property that he's going to want future access to, so he's not going to cut himself off.
Other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will close the public hearing, and we will come back to the board for any other discussion, questions. I, I have made a note here, just some of my own experience, that there's a lot of environmental regulations, that's the reason I asked that question about wetlands or stream mitigation. There's always, the issue's been brought up several times a night about perking, and those are all developer at risk. He's, he's got so many lots to spread out his cost of development, and I would say chances are, he won't get forty-five lots, but...
That's the question I...
Maybe he does.
That's the question I was getting to.
It's obvious, I think there's some issues there that, that he'll have to, he'll have to deal with, and some of it not, not for Randolph County, but for the state of North Carolina, as, was mentioned previously. So, any other discussion, questions? I've just made several notes in preparation for our meeting tonight, and that's one of the reasons I mentioned about the township, because Trinity puts it in, it puts it in my township, it puts it in the area that I represent, but, and also, I have, I have some history in, in this process, and this is not the first development that Mr. Earnhardt has undertaken in our county. To my knowledge, we, we've never had a problem with, with Mr. Earnhardt. I mean, whatever conditions it's imposed on him, he's done. And I don't know of a complaint from anybody that had bought a house from him now. I'm not making that all-inclusive statement, but I think he's been, he's been responsible in what he does. This process has been vetted by the Technical Review Committee, and it says, it was done, the proposed conditional zoning, let's see, has met the Randolph County Unified Development Ordinance and the Randolph County Growth Management Plan. And the Technical Review Committee finds that this request meets all technical requirements of both the ordinance and the plan, is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest, and should be approved by the Randolph County Planning Board. That came from the Technical Review Committee. Subsequent to that, the Randolph County Planning Board voted unanimously after vetting that it be approved. And as I said, Mr. Earnhardt takes some, takes some risk in what he does. We have the deed restrictions now, that was listed in here as, as the first issue that was raised that night. But I had received a phone call from an adjoining property owner, he doesn't live there, but he owns property there, and I had understood that those deed restrictions had, had since come about because of the sickness or the surgery that was mentioned. So I think when we look at the pictures that's in here, it is compatible, compatible with the homes that are in the area, and it's certainly better development than, than some of the surrounding area there. So I think that it, it brings an improvement to the area. So, and since this is in my area, I will make a motion that we follow the, the decision of the Randolph County Planning Board and approve the request, approve the rezoning. I'll make a second on that. We have a motion and a second to further discuss your comments, any commission tonight. All right. Hearing none, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And it passes unanimously. Thank all of you for your participation tonight, for all of you that are watching, watching at home, and to all the citizens of Randolph County, we say Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. Twenty-one's got to be a better year. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Allo.
We are adjourned.